The Coleman Allen.
The Coleman Allen. Would you both like to talk? Maybe not.
I get a little nervous.
So we were here to talk to you about the instructional technology that.
You'd like to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm.
What do you do?
I'm a coordinator of innovation. I also am the teacher at Cache. I came from high school. I'm a teacher at Cache a little bit.
And I'm the Coleman Allen Director of Technology. So Technology Department supports a variety of things in the district. It's more than just devices. We support teachers in the classroom technology. Besides solving problems, we work directly with the teachers to find new technology that's available. We also, thanks to John, our behind the scenes over here, he does the concerts, the plays, and records everything and can upload it to YouTube. The presentations in the auditorium, we are responsible for those type of setups. Again, for the recording and making them available to the public. As well as John is again, I link directly to Riverhawk News where we upload it to the YouTube channel. So they create it and there's that relationship there so we can have it available. So he is important to us as well as all the other team members.
It's Riverhawks Weekly featuring Grace Bartels.
Is that correct? You remember seeing them?
Yeah.
We also support, as you've seen here, the STEM program in both the secondary as well as the elementary. So we're partners with the technology teachers as well as Melissa in the elementary school. And so one of the things we started doing, I was recently in some elementary classrooms and I saw a need. So we purchased a couple of microscopes for the littles. And what we're doing is I'm going to work with the elementary teachers to build a STEM kit that supports them in the classroom besides what they do in the STEM program with Melissa. So it complements each other. So besides what Melissa does, the classroom teachers have science, the standards that they're expected to cover. So what we're going to do is help them with instructional technology. So we have two microscopes we recently purchased. Cheap microscope, but they're perfect for little children. They have works screen and one of them actually attaches to an iPad. So the teacher can display it as well as display it to the smart board. So if you've ever come through a microscope, you try to look through the lens, right? You're not quite sure if you're seeing your eyelashes or you're seeing something under the microscope. This takes away the problem and the kids can become scientists. So I'll be working with the teachers to build that using the next gen science standards as well as the instructional technology. We've started that project already. So that's new and that's a lot of fun.
So I, with Stacy Hopkins, run the CA Student Help Desk and we take the kids to do just about anything we can in the building. This year, we taught digital citizenship to both elementary and middle school students, which I have a student in Cache who I don't think I could smile at all until he entered like an elementary school. So I'm hoping he'll be a teacher. Last year, we worked a lot more with elementary STEM. She is doing a ton with Lily class now, so we haven't really done much this year with her. We bring them along and the technicians will bring them along on Tech One problems. So they'll hook up computers or they'll put on DVD players for teachers. We, they also, because I go and help do all the recordings and create videos for the elementary teachers, the kids will come and help me do that. So they do a lot of green screen with me. They are in charge of all of it. They set it up, they record it and then I end up putting it together just because it's easier. But the Cache kids do a lot with it. And then they also did readiness day and life ready skills. So in Cache, we talk a lot about what they need to prepare for adulthood. And Stacy Hopkins runs the readiness day and the Cache kids will help with that each year. We have a digital badging that our Cache kids will work on. It's through OIO. They have coding courses. It's connected to SUNY Stony Brook and they have K-12 challenges. And this is kind of a little clip of it. They can do all sorts of coding. They can use Python, HTML. Any, any kind they want to learn hatch they can in OIO. I actually have a kid who created or designed, she hasn't created yet, but she designed an app for the high school. It's called Insposet. It's like Pinterest, but it's meant to inspire the kids, like other kids in the building for whatever projects they're working on. So if they're, they can't figure out what they want to do for a project, they can get that help from other students. So I asked her if she wanted to code it and we'll work on coding that in at OIO. Partly because the SUNY Stony Brook students can help me if I get stuck because coding is not my, my main thing.
So tech PLP has really changed in the last several years. So what's happened was how we were doing it, we knew was ineffective. So we had to find a way to do it. So over the course of the last two years, we've really changed it and made it more part of just their natural program. So we went from very ineffective to very teacher engaged activities that they want and they're actually teaching. So Ally works directly with that and then I come in on this stuff.
So, so every first and third Friday of the month, I run tech PLP in the libraries of the Peach Building. So middle school, high school, we meet here and then elementary, I'll meet in each of the elementary libraries. And each month is a different theme. So we talk about the tech that goes around like project based learning or student engagement or parent communication. And then I also have teachers who will run them as well. We've had a couple from the high school and elementary that they do a phenomenal job. The teachers have also asked me to attend their grade level meetings. So it's specific to like their pathways projects and the things that they're doing in the classroom so that it meets their needs instead of just going to a tech PD that means nothing to them. And then I started to create videos for independent tech PLP. And I have a couple on Google Classroom with it. They can watch in their own time in case they missed one or they're interested. They wanted to see one and didn't get to it. So they have the ability to watch it.
So they have to compete eight over the course of the year. So they can do strands where they rely on each other or they build or grow their skillset. Or it can be one offs as well as that independent. And some teachers, because they're so specialized, they'll ask to build their own training outside of the district. So we also offer that as well.
Yeah, our tech teachers do that a lot because they do so much outside that it's way more specialized than I would go into, so.
It makes sense and they enjoy it because it's self driven. It's definitely a positive feedback that we're getting with this new style. They, they do have to submit something at the end of the year to show they participated in the eight. The first two months we do together. So that's why it's eight. So September and October, we actually do as a team with the group as a whole rather than that independent they get to select.
So last year I became an Apple coach. I applied for Apple coaching and it was a free coaching that Apple puts on. It was a lot of hours, but we go in, I now, I often go into the classroom. So the Apple coaching course was helpful. We do a lot of green screen with teachers, especially the elementary. I think the kids find it fascinating that they can stand in front of a green fabric and then I put anything behind it. This is in Michelle's, Michelle Wayans' class over at EJ. Kindergarten had a farm, they wrote a story. And then we recorded each kid reading part of their story and then I put it together. I'm going to play a little bit.
Welcome to. I came from God and all the mountains. The farmer, I'm in, in hay.
My name is Misha and I am a farm. And I eat the, I get the eggs for chicken, they can eat them.
My name is Rosie. I feed my pigs dry corn.
Hi, my name is Rosa and I'm a farmer and I eat the pigs' dry corn. And I feed my cows with hay.
My name is Fred and I grow in the wood to cook me off.
Hi, my name is Angela and I, I am a pig and I eat.
I'm a napkin and I am a pig. And I eat straw, dry corn, apples, hay, and hay. I live in a tent and.
My name is Brian and I eat dry corn.
So we go through it all. And again, as I explained, kindergarten had a farm. Yeah, I know. I don't want to tell you how many times it took us to kill a dog. So this is Rover, Ms. Rover's class in CE. They did monster ads and she brings in a bunch of people. So they write a song in music at like a jingle. They draw their monsters in art. They write a persuasive piece that tries to convince you to buy their monster. They then, I record their ads. And then they give their pictures to Ms. Taj, whose class sews their monster and then gives it to them, the kids. Which is really cool. They love it.
I'm Shelly Allen and I'm selling my monster named Ava. This monster will change your life. One reason is that it can fly if your car breaks down, it can fly and score you. Another reason, it's wrong. If you get stuck on reading, it can tell you. If you want to buy my monster, it's $15. You can buy it on Ava.com, the W. My number is 587657.
They're really fun about it because like when you're, they're talking about their monsters. A lot of them, a lot of those monsters clean up everything. Or they fly into school. Like you, you could tell what they're like, maybe struggle with at home. Like my room's always messy and my monster will clean it all up. In middle school, we are doing, the Ms. Nesslin is doing Storymaker with the kids. And she worked with Josh Pride and she, they wrote scripts on conflict resolution because that was the big theme in middle school last month. And this group chose Hamilton Jefferson because they disagreed on how the government should run. So that was there. They chose the historical one. Others chose not so historical ones, which was fine. It was all about conflict resolution. She talked about conflict in English and what it all looked like. They sent it out to Storymaker and the Storymaker, so they wrote the script, they recorded their voices. They then uploaded it and then Storymaker came back with an animated video for them and then sent it back to her. This is just one example. I probably won't play the whole thing because I, I'm, I was history major, but I don't know if I realize history the way I do, so.
How do you know that Hamilton has much more ideas than Jefferson, Michael?
Oh, why don't I tell you? Astride National Government is best for society because Hamilton thought if we let people do what they want, then we can't stop them for destroying the society that we made.
Although people aren't satisfied with Hamilton's things, now I wish to have a new government. We totally know I could go back to controlling a dictatorship, a government.
Except that Hamilton wasn't given everything. When Hamilton wanted something, he had to work for everything that's here right now. You're setting a fight in a war. That's more important than what Jefferson could have ever done.
Well, what about the Constitution? We need to follow the rules of the Constitution. Well, if we don't, then we won't have the laws our forefathers have created for us to strictly follow.
I think what they, they were really excited about the product and like after working so hard on it, they couldn't wait for them to see it. So the Storymaker was pretty successful for her class. And we're hoping that some of the high school teachers will also try it out and see what the high schoolers come up with. Because these are seventh graders. And the last thing we've been talking about a lot this year is augmented reality. I did a couple of tech PLPs on it. This is Night Sky. It's an augmented reality app that they have on their iPads. Nikki Space uses it and for her classes, does it make sense? But so when they can't go outside, she, they look up to Night Sky on this. There are other ones where you can look at artifacts or you can enter museums all with the iPad. So if you ever want to see them, I can show you the other ones, but this was one example. So all of the things that we've done led to our Apple Distinguished School. Last year, we applied. Took us several months and we, we had to do an initial application. Someone came to see if we would even qualify and then we did. So we put in the application. You have to have established a one to one program, innovate the use of Apple platforms, which is like the augmented realities and all of that. Leadership and faculty proficiency with iPad or Mac. And we have, I think it was 90 or 95% of teachers are Apple teachers. And then you also have to have continuous innovation with the leadership team. So we qualified, so then when we applied, this is what each of the applications looked like. It was two pages. This is just the first page for each one of them. But we had to include the vision, the learning, the success and what's next. So we spent all of last semester, the last semester of last year gathering the evidence that the teachers have done for that year, last year and previous years and put it all together in a newsletter. It used to be books, but they changed it to newsletters and then they changed it again to something else. So we, when we apply next time, that we'll have to do something different. But they were newsletters. And so we received the Apple Distinguished School station at the end of last year. That's the Play-Doh touch app, which if you have kids is really cool.
Can you explain that? I was just trying to figure out what that is.
So.
What's in front of the student? What's the physical?
Play-Doh.
Material? That's, that's actual Play-Doh?
Yep, so in art, she built that little guy. My son uses it at home. It is, if you have a kid, it's like at least an hour of their time. Just, are you that interested?
So it's just mine, but yes.
It's just Play-Doh. So they create whatever they want. They create, they use Play-Doh and then the Play-Doh app scans it or you scan, the app scans the Play-Doh, whatever they do. And then they can play with the creature they created. Or I'm sure you could use other material than Play-Doh as long as, because like I, my son wants to play down in Florida. He, I was like scanning like books and stuff, trying to get, and it would take it. So like the characters in the books were on there too. So I think it would work for other things, but it was, it is, it is called the Play-Doh Touch App, so. It should be, and if you want it for your class, I can have it for you.
No, for her grandchild.
No, they like just Play-Doh and the real toys. No screens in Grandma's house.
So the thing with coming up next, you probably heard on the news a lot is AI. We started talking about that a lot in tech PLP and in the tech committee. It's not going away. It is pretty fascinating, but we're obviously just starting in education, learning about it and how we can use AI with kids and, you know, how to teach, how to teach them how to be ethical with AI.
And as it's evolving, yeah, as it's evolving, what we're finding is there are certain platforms such as ChatGPT that we can't open because you have to be 18 years of age. So, or parent permission. So how do you gather all that, that to open it for students? But we can open it for the staff. So supporting that and having those conversations and having it at the committee level as well as through PLPs are really valuable. So we're trying to find our way through it and embrace it at the same time. A lot of people are nervous about it, trying to figure out how it impacts us in the classroom. But also others are embracing it, trying to figure out how to use it in the classroom, right? And in an effective manner. The other thing that we're leading into is the CTE pathway for Cache. So a little bit about my background, why did I want to do the STEM box as an elementary? I'm elementary certified and I'm reading certified. I'm science certified, six, 12 as well, and admin, but now I'm CTE certified. So that came from being a tech director for over a year and I had to submit it as evidence that as a tech director, I'm a technician. And now I'm tech cert, the CTE certified. So because I have that background, we can now offer it as part of the class. So now it can be a pathway. So that's really exciting. And I have to say, I have yet to come across a student help desk that is a CTE pathway. Because most tech directors don't have that certification, right? So that's really, really exciting for us and that makes us really unique and special to our students. And I'm thrilled that we can offer that. That leads into also going into summer. So we hire our students during the summer to work. So we're looking at that as the work opportunity for students. And they get paid, which isn't that awesome? So great opportunities for our kids. That's the end of our presentation.
First topic, just wanted to get on everybody's radar, the reorganization meeting in July. Nice statute, we're supposed to have it by July 15th, but with July 4th starting to creep into that middle of that week. Just wanted to put some potential dates out there, July 5th or 6th or the 13th filing Thursday. These potential dates, so hopefully neither Tuesday's meeting or definitely the May meeting, we can lock that in for everybody. Which days of the week? It's a Wednesday, Thursday or a Thursday. Upcoming events and these, I just wanted to share this and I'll send these to the boards. You can have these and they'll be in your weekly updates going forward. Because again, a lot of stuff going on, as we all know, springtime is a busy time in our schools here. Going tomorrow night at Spring Play for good for sixth grade, et cetera. Just wanted you to be aware of all the good things that are going on in our schools and events which are certainly all welcome to attend as far as the concerts and art shows and prom is soon as we think, May 6th. So it's coming up quick. So that's a great community spend as well. Six o'clock here for coronation and then the prom is at the Desmond this year. That's just, we didn't do June. Calendar, just wanted to touch base with this. It's on the agenda later on, there's a resolution. There's no questions on it right now. Let's take your table too. So I know on the election day, you know, Tara's asked, you know, because we have people coming and going out of the elementary schools. Right now, we have still a full day. You know, options of course are we can keep the kids where they're at. We'll have our SRO officers stationed at these elementary is one. Another option is we've talked about, we could already bring the kids together and bring them up here into the high school, you know, and have a date, if you will, with all the kids from the two buildings and do some type of event or some type of learning thing. It would depend on the weather, the nature trail and have a backup plan in the auditorium or something like that. So we'll have them taken care of, I guess, I think that's it, but on that deck, which is later next year for, for late. It's the weekend, you know, the week right before Memorial Day. Actually, it's the way the month of May falls on a budget. I remember Juneteenth is the day that we don't have classes in June. Again, because of some other holidays in the state, graduations pushed all the way out to June 28th, 2024. So. Because Regent's exams go up to 26th, 26th is the Regent Day. Last day for kids, last day for adults. Any questions?
So we should decide on the election day half day soon so it can be printed, right?
Right.
What day is that? May 14th?
It is May 14th, actually it's 21st, May 21st. It's the third Tuesday of the month.
Randy, could you go back to the previous grade for a second so I can just look at what? Is, are not both elementary buildings doing a grandparents celebration this year? Am I missing it? Am I looking?
No, it wasn't on there.
I'll double check with Mr. Martino.
Jim is doing one because I know he's, he's talked about it.
Yeah, he just made that.
Maybe it just has it on that calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in May.
It is in May.
Yeah. Usually, it's usually the week before the week, they're different weeks.
Okay, I just wanted to. She said May 19th.
We have a record in the back of the room. Yep.
So do we discuss the calendar now or later?
Do we have to vote? Do we vote on it?
Yeah.
I guess we can discuss it later.
Indigenous people update, recall when we retired the mascot almost two years ago. You know, part of the process was to follow up and to do several things for that. Board has a report, probably we've had that for a month as well for that. So working with the local nation there, we, you know, they've approved an acknowledgement statement as well. And so we're also working on creating like an interpretive sign that we can put on our campus as well. We'll have one indoors, similar signage indoors as well. Just discussing the history of the Stockbridge, Muncie community here and such like that. We've also ordered a couple of flags of their nation just to put up in our gym and auditorium. This is a kind of a symbol of recognition for that. And. A little bit in front of me here. You have it in front of you. I know we shared a basic curriculum outline of what, how we integrate it into our curriculum. And I say a basic curriculum outline, there's a lot of work needs to be done with that still. So that'll be an ongoing process here this spring. Instead of just to kind of, to get a more like a, probably say a detailed scope and sequence of how we're integrating the history of our early settlers here from Creek K-12.
Is Mr. Hughes doing his class again?
Yep, so, so yes, Mr. Hughes has his local history class, right? Which covers this, you know, is one of its topics, you know? I think we all remember doing this in social studies, different parts of our school careers, but he's focused on it like a little bit deeper in the class. And they're also working on coming up with the first parts of the history law that we'll be starting to put together this summer in the back hallway between the two gyms. Excited about that. Any questions on this topic? Just some other things that are later on in agenda. I just wanted to, again, just make sure everybody understands. So we have a solar project that's up in Hanacroy. That is, it's a smaller one compared to the two, the huge ones that are happening here in South Dakota. So this is something you'll approve, approve tonight in this agreement. And you can see it's a pilot that'll result in this district receiving $602,000 over the 15 years in the bill of taxes. So then if that, of course, impacts our tax levy calculation next year by the same amount basically for that, so. Questions on that? The last, another item we'll be voting on tonight is Salamit with Sleepy Hollow Homestead Association. The last, another item you'll be voting on tonight is settlement with the Sleepy Hollow Homeowners Association. You know, we've been in litigation, or we've been a party to the litigation with the two towns for several years now. And the towns, at least one of them went and worked, started to work on a settlement with Sleepy Hollow, which then the towns agreed to. Just, we're parties to this, you know, we're not, we're not the assessors, so let everybody know that. So, I agree to it. We would have to pay back two hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in back taxes to Sleepy Hollow Association. Does it go to the owners, the household owners, and Sleepy Hollow goes to the association? For that. And part of the other part of the, there's a lot of legal, you have it, is that for the next twenty years, those, they call it common parcels in the lake, will be assessed at fifty percent of what they were previously assessed in. So that'll impact, you know, that's just, like, take, I forget how much, over a million dollars, right? Yeah, over a million dollars of assessed values is gone. So everybody else makes it up. So, I say everybody else, everybody, whether they live in the town of Carroll, the town of Kansaki, town of Athens, town of Baltimore, will make up that difference.
And we're two-thirds of it because we cover more area?
It's just what they, what's how the formula works, is they look at all the taxes that are paid, you know, all the different taxes, and that's it. So the district makes up sixty-six percent of the taxes, that's something that generally speaks to people that are.
Just surprise me, all this time, I was thinking we were like more equal partners, but it seems like we're not.
Yeah, you have to remember too, like, well, like the county, for instance, is the whole county. Yeah, so, you know, so everybody, if more people painted in the county, it offers, if you will. That's typical, though, of most school districts.
But we talked, we have, we've been putting, we have more than that currently put aside.
Yes, so, so the plan of being.
Upping anything?
No. So we've been, knowing this is happening and just playing it safe and being fiscally prudent and smart, we've been, the board has been agreeing to put money aside each year into our tax tertiary reserve, right? In case, well, honestly, in case we lose the case, right? I should say also, if we had lost the case, if it'd gone all the way and we'd lost the case, it was going to be over seven hundred thousand dollars we'd have to pay back. I have a good point to make too, so. So, so we will use the money out of that reserve to pay this back. So it won't be, it won't have any impact on our, perfectly, our general fund budget in a sense. We won't say, oh, we can't buy those crayons now because we have to pay back some dollars because we put aside money to take care of this, so. We will have to have a conversation later, because we have more than that in there. The board wants to decide what to do with that money that's still left in that reserve. We really can't, we're only supposed to put money in the tax tertiary reserve if you're somewhat aware of something pending, case pending, which we often have, because of all the pilots we have. There's already seems to be every other year, some type of case pending where one of the companies that's a pilot wants to have it reassessed or those types of, or come off the pilot, they definitely sue the towns to have it reassessed for that, so.
Thank you for you and anybody else involved in the land acknowledgement work. I don't know who wrote that or what's doing and betting it over there, the folks in, where are they, Wisconsin?
Yes, their whole base is out of Wisconsin, and they do have some offices in Massachusetts as well.
All right, so I just have the one quick thing. Just a reminder, I know we've mentioned it a couple of times during the year, but we're now really planning and really getting ready for it. On June fifth, we're going to have a showcase of student success. This is something that we've talked about for a few years, kind of started talking about pre-COVID and then obviously COVID may get me together in large groups, not a feasible option. So this year, on June fifth, all the students are going to have the opportunity to present something that they are proud of, that they worked on during the year. Each building is working with their teachers on how it should look, because it'll look a little bit different depending on the age level of the students. The elementary schools are really focusing in on their pathways projects and then adding also some artwork in there and some music work that they'll be planning it by building. The middle school has a variety of different things going on, because the kids can take a little bit more ownership of choice in what they want to save to be able to present. So the teachers are giving these students some opportunities to pick something they're very proud of to showcase. That's also the way it's going to happen up at the high school. But each building will ensure that each student has something that they're going to be showcasing in the show. The show will start at five-thirty down at the elementary schools. They wanted to give an opportunity for parents who had kids in multiple buildings to start in once and work their way up. So it'll go elementary school, then middle school, then high school. We also wanted to try, we haven't figured it out entirely, but we're trying to figure out how in the past we have the younger kids see the presentations from the high school kids, just get an idea of what it's like to present if somebody's coming around to look at your particular project. We're just very excited about this idea. I know we talked about it, there's a little similarity to the Festival of Arts, which we used to do in the middle school. So there'll be some elements of arts in there as well. But it's just a nice opportunity for kids to be able to showcase something they're very proud of. Because we have kids doing terrific stuff all the time. And we're excited about the options up in the middle school and high school, because, you know, just saying, hey, we're all going to present our social studies project, some kids, that isn't the piece that they're most proud of. Some of the kids, the piece that they're most proud of is something they made woodworking class or, you know, it's something that they could do in a PE class. So we are working out the ability to have childcare at the showcase so that parents can come and look around and see stuff. If they have kids that age, they will obviously be presenting, but a lot of parents also have kids who are a little bit younger. Or they've looked at one kid's project and they need their kid to go and stay somewhere for a little bit so they can watch another kid do that, do their presentation. We're also working out food, because from our local parent community forum, weird, food brings people out. So I just, we have some access to some possible grant money, so just put that in there. And then the other piece that we're having discussions about is if we need to provide transportation. If that, if that would be something that would help parents get in, because we want to make sure that everybody who wants to come and see the showcase, yes, they come and see the showcase. So mark it on your calendars, it's going to be a lot of fun. The kids do amazing and incredible, interesting things when given the opportunity. So I think, I think it'll be a very good day, a lot of fun, and hopefully the first of many.
When you advertise an event, you should circle back to that date at the end.
So back to June fifth?
Yes.
Okay, June fifth.
There you go.
Yeah.
I put it in my phone.
Start as a calendar, like for everybody here.
Next year, you make it on Budget Vote Day, and then you have the kids come up here to see it.
You should say that, Mr. Towns.
It was on the Budget Vote Day initially, when we started the school year, it was on Budget Vote Day. And then I got together committee, and the idea was the committee was really going to talk about what we were going to showcase in the showcase. But the first thing that they said is they really thought that having it on Budget Vote Day was a bad idea because there's so much other stuff going on. There's, I guess, basket raffles, people coming in and out. So they really felt, and that teachers also wanted, their staff in general, wanted the opportunity to go and vote. And probably wouldn't appreciate being stuck here until later in the evening. So there was a lot of going back and forth. Then the other piece that got brought up is that some of the classes are on trimester and/or they're the last quarter of the year. So those students wouldn't have something from that class to be able to prevent if that's going to be their thing. So then the high school ruined our first week in June, because we're like, oh, first week in June. But I guess there's senior, senior skip days in there and a little bit of maybe pranking could possibly be going on. Yeah, well, one, one day ahead of the English exam, yes. So there was a lot of going back and forth before we landed on June fifth. But we did start out with the, and it may be something that we circle back around to depending on how it goes, I think. This is our first go-round with it, so everybody wanted to make sure they had the most amount of time possible to plan. But next year, it'll be, okay, we've already done this, and it's like fine.
Historically, haven't we had the, at least EJA had an art show displayed? And is that going to?
For, for the budget vote? Yeah, that'll still be there.
Does CE do something similar?
They do.
Do the basket raffle?
I know they do the basket raffle, but they do have, I'm trying to think, but they just, I think they put it in their cafeteria is where they do the art display, but they usually have some things around. And we'll still, we'll still do this stuff that we used to do. It'll just be on the showcase day, you'll have kids there to talk to you about their awesome stuff. They have some of some stuff. Maybe we'll see some of those, you know, technology pieces and hand it to whichever people.
And while I have?
Hey, I've got three super quick things for everybody. I submitted the property tax report card shortly after you all agreed to adopt the budget at the last board meeting on April the sixth. That was due today, but submitted a while back. Required to tell you that, so there you go. All the property tax report card is, is me just basically providing them requested information related to tax cap information, tons of information, which I'll share with you all. I did want to just take a quick second here and just recognize three people, first of which being Kirk Wilkinson for earning his two-hundredth victory as the varsity baseball coach here at Kansaki Athens, with a victory over Rensselaer, so hats off to him. And I also wanted to extend a big thank you to our two groundskeepers, Ethan Ben Slake and Claude Rose, the poster house, on the improvements that I have seen and with the softball field and baseball field and have heard about relentlessly from parents of baseball and softball players. Kids have talked about it, the coaches are loving it. The drainage issues seem to have not gone away completely, but are vastly improved. And if you think back a few months ago, it didn't cost us the three go-arounds of trying to find a company to come in here and do it for fifty thousand dollars. We were able to get the dirt and do it ourselves, and the two gentlemen have done a fine job at that. So I just wanted to give them a public shout out. I'll be sure to follow. Budget hearing dates are set for May second at six PM down at EJA in the cafeteria and at the same evening at seven PM up here in the Kansaki Elementary Cafeteria. We do encourage anybody and everybody to attend and listen to how great our budget is. And on the note of the budget, the budget newsletter has been posted to the district website. We did approve it for printing today. At the top of page three is the QR code that was requested by the finance committee that further explains Proposition Two as it relates to the capital reserve. So there is a blurb in there about a capital reserve, as well as a QR code to a video that further explains what a capital reserve is, how it's funded, how money is expended out of it, et cetera. Also uploaded to the budget website, or our budget division of our website is the budget development presentation that I have shared with you all since, be, end of, at the end of January. What's up?
Link doesn't work.
It's not in the link, you have to go to the website.
It says, access denied.
Does anybody have any question? Does anybody have any questions for me?
The budget itself is going to be available, is that right?
The popular budget is, needs to be provided by Tuesday at the very latest. I have it completed, I've been proofreading it all day, just to make sure everything's up to snuff, because I don't want to print something and have an issue. I meant like I did last year.
Have access denied.
Access denied.
So that's where it goes to the.
That's, yeah, that's the popular budget that you would have read about in the newspapers. You all will get a hard copy of it on Tuesday. Typically, we send two copies to each of the libraries, local libraries, and then we also provide four copies to each office, each building office as well. Pretty good?
Anything else for Mr. Park?
That just made her day, by the way.